Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 8, 2025 meeting of Greenville City Council.
Mayor PJ Connelly has been presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Les Robinson for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you'll join me. Bow your heads, please. Our heavenly gracious Father, thank you for another wonderful day. Lord, we ask that you bring your presence into this chamber and that you give us the patience and wisdom that we need to make good citizens, make good decisions for our citizens. We ask you bless us, give us the information we need. We ask you bless our citizens, and especially on this day, Lord, we ask that you bless who are less fortunate than we are today and bestow your blessings upon them and give them peace and comfort. And as we move forward, thank you for another day. In your precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connelly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connelly, we have a form.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, any recommended changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor. The applicant for item number three, Happy Trail Farms rezoning ordinance, has requested that the item be continued to the June 12 city council meeting. The applicant for item number four, the resolution to close Grand Avenue, has also requested that the item be continued to the June 12 city council meeting. And then city staff is requesting the item number five, 2025-26 Annual Action Plan be continued to the August 14 city council meeting. Therefore, I request city council to amend the council agenda to remove items number three, four, and five.
I'm making a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
That's a strikeout right there. That's three.
Mayor, before we move on, we have citizens here tonight that were here for item number four, the resolution to close a portion of Grand Avenue, and I would like to address them really quickly.
Sure, absolutely.
For the citizens of West Greenville and South Greenville that are here tonight to make your hearts known about the item on our agenda to rezone, or not rezone, but close a portion of Grand Avenue. Number one, I wanted to address you and say thank you for your presence. This is an item that is close to all of our hearts. And the owner of the building on Grand Avenue that was making the proposal for it to be closed basically was informed that he would likely not have the support needed to get that action taken and decided to request to have it taken off the agenda tonight. With that being said, I do not want you all to count that as a win, okay? So I already see heads nodding, but I do not want you to count that as a win because generally when things like that happen, they resurface again later, all righty? So I have most of your phone numbers, and for the ones that I didn't have already, I have now. I will be reaching out to you or members of my team over the next week to give you an update if there are any and if it comes up again to follow up with you and continue our community conversations as it relates to things that impact the West and South Greenville community. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I wanted to thank you for your presence because, as I said in Tuesday's meeting, when these types of things come up, you have the support and you have the voices on council to speak up for what your needs and interests are, but we cannot do it alone. And so your presence is invaluable, and I appreciate you guys and love you.
All right. We'll move on to special recognitions.
I would like to ask Kevin Heffron and his family to come forward.
It is truly my honor to be able to recognize Kevin Heffron for his retirement here from the city of Greenville. And I would just like to give a few comments, first of all, about Kevin. They give you kind of the insight of this outstanding man that we have. That's all, believe me, that's all there is, okay? So Kevin began his career with the city on March 20 of 2000 when he was hired as the Building and Ground Superintendent in the Public Works Department. Over the next 18 years, he played a key role in maintaining and improving city facilities, consistently demonstrating leadership, professionalism, and a strong commitment to public service. On April 28, 2018, Kevin was promoted to the Assistant Director of Public Works, where he applied his extensive experience and deep institutional knowledge to the broader operation of the department. In this role, he helped oversee a wide range of essential services, mentoring staff, and contributing significantly to the department's long-term success. Kevin also served as the city's arborist, with this being his true passion. His work with relief and 20-plus years of Community Tree Day have been at the forefront of this city's Tree City USA designation. Over the last 10 years, Greenville's tree canopy has increased over 3%, and very few cities can say this. Kevin Heffron has been one of the champions for trees in this city. After 25 years and one month of dedicated service, Kevin retired as Assistant Director of Public Works. His impact on the community and his colleagues is unmeasurable. His steady leadership, work ethic, and collaborative spirit have left a lasting mark, and his legacy will be felt for years to come. And I can honestly say, Kevin Heffron, that you gave everything to this city, and you did it with the greatest amount of integrity and respect for our community. And I can honestly say that any time I called you, you showed an immense passion for making sure you did what was right for this city in a lot of very tough situations, and it just speaks of the type of person you are. It has been an honor, not only for myself, but everybody that's had an opportunity to work with you, to be able to work close to you. I wish you the best of luck in your retirement, and thank you for everything that you've done for the city of Greenville.
I just want to say a few words. Kevin has been really my right-hand man for the past seven years, so it's a bit disconcerting not having him there over the last few weeks. I want to say thank you to the Heffron family, right? Working at Public Works, there's many, many late nights, extra hours on weekends, anytime a natural event comes through, a natural disaster. Kevin's been there for the past 25 years, and it's like I said, he's been there for the last seven years as the Assistant Director, and you always want to surround yourself with the smartest people. And if kindness is a measure of intellect, Mr. Heffron is the smartest man in the room. So again, thank you to the Heffron family.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, we have one, the one thing good about being the mayor is you can just put anything on the agenda that you want to. You don't even have to put it on the list, but one thing that we want to do and show our appreciation, we have a special person that works with the city of Greenville, and not many people might know this in our community, but this week is Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. Yes, yes. And I will say that the city of Greenville has an incredible clerk's office. We've got the best clerk's office, not just in the state, but in the country. Many people might not know this, but they do everything for us. Anytime there's a phone call to City Hall, they handle it for us. Anytime there's a request for a meeting, they handle it for us, all the paperwork that has to be done. And luckily for technology, they used to have to sit in the back room and write out all of the notes from all the meetings, but thankfully, things have changed a little bit. We've gotten a little bit better at that, but the number of hours that they spend and the work that they do is immeasurable. So thank you, guys, for all that you do. Of course, we've got Valerie Schueger right here. We've got Danielle and Crystal. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerks, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest amongst public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing boards, and agencies of governments at all, at other levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have a pledge to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas the municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerks through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state and county, and whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the invaluable contributions of the city of Greenville's clerk's office. Now therefore, I, PJ Connelly, Mayor of the city of Greenville, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4 through 10, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week in Greenville, Pitt County, North Carolina, and extend appreciation to our city of Greenville City Clerk's Office for the vital services that they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community. This 8th day of May, signed Mayor PJ Connelly.
It's kind of all adding up now.
And she does such a wonderful job. Our next item on the agenda will be the appointments, so I will kick it over to our wonderful city clerk.
All right. Thank you all again. First board that we have is the Board of Adjustment. Councilmember Foreman.
I would like to appoint David Southworth.
I'm sorry, David.
Southworth.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion or second.
She's making a motion. You're making the second.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr.?
Southworth.
Southworth.
Okay, next is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn.
Oh, I've got a seat on that.
Yes.
All right, let me continue that, please.
Okay. Next is the Historic Preservation Commission. Councilmember Blackburn.
Oh my gosh. Continue that one, too.
All right, yes, ma'am. Next, we have the Housing Authority. Councilmember Blackburn.
I would like to nominate Nola Dixon, please.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Dixon.
Okay, and I will just note, we do have one other seat up there. That's for the resident commissioner. We're just waiting on the housing authority to provide us that nomination, okay? Next, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilmember Daniels.
I'd like to appoint Ms. Toya Jacobs.
Second.
All right. Motion been made by Mayor Protem Daniels, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Jacobs.
Okay, next we have the Recreation and Parks Commission. Mayor Connelly, this is your appointment.
I'm going to continue this one.
Okay, yes, sir. And finally, we have the Youth Council. Councilmember Willis.
Continue, please.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Mayor Connelly, that concludes the appointments.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to our robust meeting.
There we go. Item number six, presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 operating budgets for the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Shepherd Memorial Library, and Greenville Utilities Commission. We will begin tonight with the budget for the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. Now I call for President and CEO Andrew Schmidt for the presentation.
Oh, hey.
Point of order.
Hey, hey. We skipped the public comment period.
Public comment period.
Hey, that could be a problem. If you'd like to speak during the public comment period.
Our first speaker is Andrew Smith.
I got so excited about the appointments, so. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted in the same meeting or another meeting during the same week. We'll discuss. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who are registered have spoken, individuals who are not registered will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Mayor Connelly, we do not have any registered speakers this evening.
Hey. Yeah. Would anybody like to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Mr. Smith, would you like to? Can you fit, hey, can you fit the whole budget in?
Three minutes. You get three minutes.
Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Now we'll move on to item six.
Okay. Item number six, presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 operating budgets for the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Shepherd Memorial Library, and Greenville Utilities Commission. We'll begin tonight's presentations with the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. Now I call for President and CEO Andrew Schmidt for the presentation.
All right, thanks, guys. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Just as a reminder, we are here to create experiences. Doesn't matter if it's family reunions, leisure travel, sports travel, conventions and meetings. We want to make sure that when people come to Greenville, they have an excellent time and they talk about their experience to other people. Travel and tourism is very valuable. That dollar is so critical to the economy. We bring in a different type of revenue source. We create a positive local impact, support our small businesses, create jobs when we do our job well, retain jobs. Love the destination exposure when people come here for the first time and learn about our area. Destination profile gets elevated when we have larger conventions that are successful. And of course, a robust travel tourism economy fuels growth of hospitality-related businesses and also can help with community pride and resident involvement. So we did have a record year in 2023. We don't have our 2024 numbers quite yet, but we did break a record of about $313 million generated by travel and tourism in agreement with Pitt County, and we do expect to break that again when we get our 2024 numbers. So we're a healthy travel tourism industry right now for Greenville. You can see the numbers here. I think the things that we'd like to highlight with these numbers is the number of people employed in Pitt County through travel and tourism. That's almost at 2,100. We also like to point out the resident savings. So you can bring in more travel and tourism funds and expenditures. The amount of resident savings for taxes is going to go up because that's less they have to provide because those travelers are coming into our area. And of course, travel and tourism funds, they really touch a lot of different sectors in our community, and that $313 million, you can see what it affected. Food and beverage, lodging, transportation, retail, and recreation. So that dollar is spread out across a wide range of industries in Greenville. So let's very briefly talk about the revenue outlook for travel and tourism. And of course, we're funded through the travel and tourism hotel motel occupancy tax, and so we pay very much attention to this. I'm a research animal, like research. We get our research from a group called Tourism Economics. And in this slide, you really just need to pay attention to the domestic leisure and the domestic business. Things are looking good for domestic leisure travel. Our households are solid in their funding. We're seeing income growth in all socioeconomic statuses and modest inflation. Inflation's kind of gotten much more in check, and of course, we have a federal policy right now and also state policy that is favoring tax cuts, so that helps with domestic leisure travel. International, we won't touch on. I'm just glad we're not an international destination. They're having a harder time based on kind of the tariff wars and some of the political things. But we also have a large domestic business travel industry here, and that's really corporate travel. That's your conventions and meetings, and you can look, I've got a slide, that right-hand slide is from Q4. We don't have Q5 numbers yet, but that's the highest level of, that we've seen since COVID as far as businesses that want to spend money on travel, want to have conventions and meetings. So that number has gone up and up over the last few years, and that's good for a community like ours because we do have a convention center. We do have a lot of industry here. We have the hospital and ECU, so that bodes well for us as well. Revenue sources that fund us, typically, we really just look at the hotel motel occupancy tax. We're not funded through the general fund. Air and BBs are also included in that. We do get money from capital reserve each year to support our sports commission efforts and our efforts with Little League Softball World Series, but that is also, comes from occupancy tax. We do have ARPA funding from Pitt County. This is our last year of ARPA funding. We'll use some fund balance this upcoming year, and merchandise sales, I'll save that for just a minute. Revenue summary. So this upcoming proposed budget is crafted with 3% increase. That's pretty conservative. We still have three months of revenue that we don't have yet because it hasn't come in, but, so we try to be conservative with that, but we do anticipate that those revenues will come in higher. So we do anticipate that'll come in higher, and that will help us use less fund balance. Some things affecting revenue this year are average daily rates for the hotels. We have a few more hotels than we did last year, so those rates are stabilized a little bit more, not as high as they were at this time last year, but we're in good shape. Travel in all market segments are solid, and our inventory continues to increase with the Hilton Garden Inn and the Stabbered Suites, and that's very helpful, especially on weekends like this with graduation. We'll have every room that's full. Budget details. Our budget for this upcoming year is proposed at $2.2 million. Broken down, occupancy tax equates 1.662 of that. We have our capital reserve funding, ARPA funding. Again, that's got an asterisk there because that's our last year of ARPA funding from the county. Our fund balance has two asterisks. We anticipate not having to use that much fund balance. For every percent above 3%, we'll reduce that number by $17,000, so we feel good about not using as much fund balance. Merchandise sales, that's going to come from our visitor center, which we'll talk about in just a minute. It's a sliver, but we, you know, it's going to be income, so we counted it. And then with that 2.2 million, we are obligated to take 1% of that 3% and give it to the Greenville Convention Center per the interlocal agreement. So they'll receive $554,000 from us throughout the year for their marketing and operations. So our net budget is 1.669. Budget highlights. What are we going to use this funding for? And that's really what I wanted to talk to you about. We'll be able to do additional advertising and marketing initiatives with our increase. Very, very important. There's someone like me and someone like my staff in every major city in North Carolina and all the tourism areas, like the beach and mountains. We have to compete for the tourism dollar. They don't usually just magically show up in Greenville. We've got to go get them and bring them here. So additional advertising and marketing is crucial. This past year, we spent about $250,000 marketing Greenville, Pitt County, in all sorts of different ways. I could spend an hour talking about how we market, but, so that will go up to about $270,000 this year, so we're happy about that. We're going to spend some money on creation of an extranet partner portal. What that is, is Greenville's growing awfully fast. I know you guys know that. So our office has a limited staff, and it's hard to know everything that's going on in our city. It's hard to know every update in hospitality amenity, or, so we're creating a partner portal where our partners can go in and update their information by themselves. They'll have parameters they have to follow, but that will help us out a lot and help keep our information at 100% accurate. Occupancy activities, we're going to spend a little bit more money on three state boards this fiscal year, and we think our presence on those state boards will help with tourism in Greenville and Pitt County. So I'm excited to serve on those statewide boards. We'll expand our social media efforts. For the first time, we'll actually hire a social media specialist. Does anybody know social media? It's a 24/7 job. You've got to continually put information out there, and that's where the majority of people are getting their information on what to do and things to do in our area. So we want to make sure that we're up on that. And then our program of work is established by our CBB staff and board. Happy to share our program of work with anyone here that would like to see it. And then visitor center operations. We're right across the street from the Hilton Garden Inn back door, and we've had the bottom, we're in the green building, we've had the bottom half of that building for many years, and we had a visitor center in there, but it really wasn't a visitor center because we had all of our offices and all of our storage in there, so there wasn't room for people to come in and really sit down and learn about Greenville and Pitt County. We've moved upstairs, and we're in the process of turning the downstairs into a true visitor center where people can come in and really be educated about what to do in Greenville and Pitt County, give them reasons to come back. We'll have a visitor experience manager on staff, which will help plan before and while they're here to spend more time with us. And then the thing I'm really excited about is we're going to have some swag to sell. So we're going to have some Greenville branded things, some Pitt County branded things, and obviously, it's not a moneymaker for us, but it's a branding and it's a way to get our names out there. So we're hoping by fall, we'll have that all in place, and that'll be a place that people can come and buy Greenville branded items because it's hard to find in our city. There's not many places that you can do that. So very excited about our visitor center operations. And then just with Greenville Convention Center marketing, just to let you know, obviously, you see what we're going to be giving them this upcoming fiscal year, but our board does approve their budget, so it is not money that we don't know what they're spending it on. We've approved what they're spending it on, so it's funded monthly. It's on a reimbursement basis, and they send us what they spend it on, and we reimburse them monthly. So the only other thing I'd say about that is if we do come in over 3%, what we're forecasting, which I think we will, they have the opportunity to get those extra funds next fiscal year through budget amendment. And they did that this year, actually. So that's a little, that's a very quick, I talk to you guys so much. I don't want to take a whole lot of time to talk about our budget, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer now. I want to thank Matt for being on our board. He is a faithful board member, so thank you, and I enjoy working with each of you, and thank you for what you do to move our city forward. Said this in our Travel and Tourism Week luncheon on Tuesday. Everywhere my staff and I are going right now, people are talking about Greenville, and they're like, you guys, what you're doing there is impressive, so, and I'm not making that, that's the honest truth. So we're excited about the direction our city's going in, so. Questions?
I ask this every year because every year I struggle. There's six cents of occupancy sales tax.
Correct.
Three cents goes to you all, and three cents goes to the convention center. Is that right?
No, ma'am. Well, three cents goes to pay off the debt on the convention center.
Okay.
It goes to capital.
Yeah.
Which is, which is being used to fund the, currently being used to fund the debt service on the convention.
On the convention center renovations that took place. So one cent goes to? On the convention center renovations that took place, so one cent goes to?
So, we have three cents left, and we take one of those three cents and give it to the convention center.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Councilman Robinson.
Couple of questions. First, do you track the dollars coming in from sports tourism?
Absolutely, yes.
And if you do, can you tell us what that was in the last fiscal year that you believe sports tourism brought into Greenville?
It's a little over $9 million is what it brought in. So, we do track that, we've got a software system and every major event that comes in, put the numbers in, and it spits out an ROI for us.
Second question, you kind of answered, I think, a little bit, but I just got some more questions. What of the monies you receive from the occupancy tax, is it allocated for advertising for particular events and promotions?
So, we do a couple of different things. We'll promote city events that are taking place, and the way we kind of look at it, sort of as we, you know, does that event have the ability to bring in people from the outside to create tourism dollars? That's kind of the threshold that we use as far as actually spending money to promote something. We spend more of our money around the state promoting people further away to come into Greenville for their meetings, conventions, sports travel, leisure travel and so forth. But if you look at the entire budget, if you take the 250 that we're spending on advertising, then take the staff salaries of those folks that are actually out selling the city, it's well over half.
I've had some questions, is there a way to determine the dollars spent on specific events?
Yes sir, yeah.
Okay. I can get with you later.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments?
I want to say thanks for all you do and your staff, your leadership is awesome. They do a really great job, and a lot of that's thanks to you and your leadership and the passion you have for our city, it's evident in everything you do, professionalism and your great presentation here tonight.
Oh, thank you.
So, thank you very much. We need you, it's really important work, spreading the good word about Greenville.
Absolutely.
So, thank you so much.
Thanks guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have one more question. We started talking about money, so your budget's 3% larger than last year's, is that right?
That's what we're forecasting, yes ma'am.
What about your revenues, are they, is that based on an increase in revenues of 3% or have they grown more or?
No, it's, well, we, because we have to start so early, you know, I, we get our occupancy tax, so it's May now, about May 20th, 22nd, I'll get what April's numbers were, we'll get what was collected in April. So, we're always a month behind, number one. Number two, we start this process in February, it's got to go to my executive board and then my full board, then to you guys. So, we're basing on the research that I shared with you in this, is, you know, what are we seeing in the industry, what are we seeing in eastern North Carolina? So, 3%, it was, it was a safe, you know, I think it's going to be higher, but we've got to be conservative and safe and, because we don't want to go below that, and then all of a sudden, we've got to re- tour.
Yeah, you got to be conservative in those numbers because of the volatility of any given event that might occur that would reduce your occupancy. That's why, you know, you saw that the budget had a certain amount of fund balance that's being used to fund the operations. If the, if those revenues come in higher than that 3% growth, it would reduce the amount of fund balance that would have to be used just to fund the operations.
Well, for instance, I know Beast of the East because the snow didn't take place this year.
That's a good example.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it did not happen. Of course, we get snow in eastern North Carolina during our first tournament, but it has been rescheduled, that's the good news. But, you know, and that's, that's the, we look at, we've lost a couple of different things because of weather, and we lost a good week of occupancy because of snow, and we're still ahead. So, that, that's a really positive sign, things like that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Back here.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Mayor, next budget presentation is Shepherd Memorial Library. Now call forward our library chairperson, Rick Smiley, to begin the presentation.
We have reasons to smile.
Good evening, I'm Rick Smiley, I'm the chair of the Shepherd Memorial Library Board. I want to thank you for putting me on that board, oh, so many months ago, and for the support that this council has always shown for the library and for all of the work each of you are doing individually, I've followed along at home a little bit, and it's been really cool stuff I've seen coming out, thank you very much. Our previous library director, the person you saw up here last year, Greg Needham, retired after 20, at least, a long time working with the state. And so, we did a search and we've hired a new director, he started last September, and his name is Roman Leary. And he is here to present to our budget for the coming year and to give you some facts about this past year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you for continuing to service, Rick.
Hey, that was an excellent presentation.
Yes, thank you. In fact, why don't you just finish it out?
These seats are waiting.
All right, okay, very good. Well, again, my name is Roman Leary, thank you so much for affording me the opportunity to come and speak to you all this evening. I'm very honored to be here. I've just started my ninth month working at Shepherd Memorial Library after starting for 17 years at Edgecombe County Memorial Library. So, I have been extremely gratified by the warm welcome that I have received, not only from the team at Shepherd, but from the city and county officials that I have had the pleasure of getting to know. I can truly say, I don't think I've ever experienced a more cordial atmosphere coming forward and a genuine atmosphere of esteem and support for the library. So, thank you so much for that before I even get started here. So, let me move forward a little bit here. Questions?
Hey, that was wonderful. Wonderful.
Thank you so much, it was a pleasure.
I love it.
I was very terrified to come before you this evening, so I'm glad.
Just keep doing what you're doing, you're doing a wonderful job.
Excellent, all right. And, oh, okay, where's, okay, and, okay, and here we are, Shepherd Memorial Library. So, I'd like to begin by sharing with you some interesting facts from our last completed fiscal year, the '23-'24 fiscal year. And during those 12 months, 244,131 people visited our library facilities, system-wide. 63,165 people in Greenville and Pitt County were active users of our libraries and the bookmobile. Our patrons checked out 351,557 books, and we provided 742 reading-centered programs with 189,969 participants. And our library staff answered 52,167 reference questions. Our proposed budget request from the city of Greenville for the upcoming fiscal year is $1,513,850. Our request to the city for general operations represents a 5.4 increase over the percent, pardon me, over the prior fiscal year. A capital request of $83,333 is needed to upgrade the public access elevator at the main library. The controls for that elevator are unfortunately now obsolete and at the end of their lifespan. So, it is sadly imperative that they be replaced. We have requested from Pitt County $41,667 as their share to complete that project. We have also requested $27,000 in capital funds for the East Group to complete a facility needs assessment of the main library. We're very excited about that, I'd be glad to talk with you about that in detail here or at any time, if you'd like to reach out to me. We have requested from Pitt County a sum of $13,500 for their contribution to this necessary project. I'm going to spend about 10 minutes on each one of these lines, I'm just kidding, I promise to be brief. On here, you will note that we have requested increases from the county for the operating expenses of both the Bethel and Winterville branches of Shepherd Memorial Library. I am very optimistic that they will be favorably disposed toward granting that request. We anticipate a decrease in desk receipts. Now, this is because the Board of Trustees has decided to eliminate rental fees on all of our DVDs and also all late fees for children's materials. I want to emphasize that this is late fees strictly limited to children's materials, and we're not discarding replacement costs for lost materials. However, it is our sincere hope that by eliminating late fees, we can encourage more people to come in with children, to check out more materials and encourage more reading among our young people. Okay, these changes are scheduled to take effect on July 1. Capital funds. The HVAC project, which is a longstanding and long-needed project, is on track to be completed by July 1st. The contract has been awarded, we're very excited about getting that completed in this fiscal year. Again, you will also note the aforementioned elevator and East Group projects. The fiscal budget, personnel expenditures. Okay, this is, we have budgeted, excuse me, we have budgeted a 4% increase for market and merit in keeping with the city's recommendations, and in addition, 1% increase in employer 401K contributions. This represents our projected operating expenditures. Here, I will draw your attention to increases in building and equipment maintenance costs. We have specifically planned for this in anticipation of some of the recommendations we will be receiving from the East Group. It is our hope that we will be able to immediately address some of the most pressing needs that they will identify. Finishing up, what you see here is a summary of our capital expenses for the current and upcoming fiscal year. Again, highlighting the costs of the elevator and our East Group assessment. And that, I'm happy to say, concludes my presentation for this evening. And as it says here, I would like to sincerely thank you for your ongoing support of the library, not only for myself, but also on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the citizens of Greenville and Pitt County who avail themselves of our resources on a daily basis, is appreciated by one and all. So, thank you very much, and I will be more than happy to entertain any questions that you have at this time, to the best of my ability. I'm very glad that I have Mr. Smiley here, that I can refer to if I find myself in over my head, and my amazing business manager, Ms. Lynn Woolard. So, between the three of us, hopefully, we can address any questions or concerns you may have at this time.
I have a question. The bookmobile.
Yes.
Is that still in operation?
Absolutely, very much. It's considered to be one of our branches, is the bookmobile.
Okay, so, I see it north of the river at the Boys and Girls Club Park there.
Yes.
Is there, are there any plans for it to go into the neighborhoods?
Unfortunately, I'm not committed to memory, all of the stops of the bookmobile, but we do have more than one stop north of the river for the bookmobile. If you would like to have a in-depth breakdown of that, I can certainly provide that to you.
Please, yes, thank you.
I'd be glad to get, absolutely, I'd be more than glad to do so. I would like to also mention that our branch, our physical branch, not our mobile one north of the river, the Bethel branch, has recently been renovated. The town of Bethel really stepped up and did an amazing job renovating that facility, and we are right now planning to increase the operating hours of that facility. So, right now, it's currently open Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from 1:00 to 5:00. We plan to expand the scope of that all week. So, they will, Monday through Friday, they will have hours, and we have got a new branch manager coming in that is going to be energetically pursuing a children and youth program there that I really hope is going to bring a lot more young people into that branch. So, we have big plans for north of the river, our physical location, and again, I will be more than happy to share with you everything about the bookmobile and its activities there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'll mention too, that we've had some conversations behind the scenes about more coverage in other underserved communities, and they have been very open to that. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you.
Councilman Buckner?
I noticed that your budget for this fiscal year is less than last year, is that because of the HVAC?
A lot of that is because there was some overlap between myself and my predecessor. So, that sent some money up there because of that, but with his departure, he's got it leveled back out again. So, that was just the way the timing worked out when I came in. I want to express here for the record my incredible appreciation for Greg Needham and the help that he gave me getting acclimated to this job, he was a fantastic person. I've been told many occasions that I have big shoes to fill, so, and I'm acutely aware of that fact, and I'm doing my absolute level best, I promise. But again, he was an outstanding individual, a wonderful library director, and I couldn't have asked for a better man to help me come in and hit the ground running in my role here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
He was also an excellent presenter, and so you're falling right on in line.
Oh, well, thank you. Appreciate that.
I did have a question.
Yes.
There was a line item that was stated, it stated Greenville Housing Authority?
Yes, we have an individual that works with us at Carver, and his, his position is funded by the Greenville Housing Authority. So, what you're seeing there is monies that come in that in turn pays for his position at Carver, serving the community.
Got you, okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, I also have the honor of serving on the library Board of Trustees as their liaison, and it's been so much fun getting to know you, officially welcome aboard, that's your first budget presentation, you did a really wonderful job. Just love everything that the library does, and you're doing a really wonderful job filling those big shoes.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that enormously. It's been a pleasure getting to know you as well, Mr. Smiley.
Thank you. Please share with your staff, who are amazing at all the branches, how much we appreciate their service to the community. You can't overstate how important the library is to our community, so thank you, thank you so much.
Well, thank you, sir, thank you very much.
And one really cool thing that you did mention was the Little Library Initiative. Are we still doing that with the?
The Little Libraries was not actually, it wasn't really a part of Shepherd Memorial Library.
I just think it's a really cool example of the way we serve the community, even, even with things that we're not tasked to do.
But what has happened, you know, with NC Reads kind of in its twilight, and they're no longer officially serving all of those libraries, Shepherd Memorial Library has come in and taken responsibility for at least some of them. We don't have the resources to cover all of them, I think there's in excess of 40 of them throughout the county. But we have made a commitment to take care of at least 18 of them and possibly 19. And we're working with other people to try to make sure there's other people who are willing to sign up and take responsibility for keeping those libraries stocked so that people can continue to avail themselves of that resource.
Thank you, that's just one great example of the way the library staff goes above and beyond to serve our community.
That, that they do, yes sir, thank you.
It's really amazing, so thank you.
Thank you.
This is a right field question. Are you by any chance related to Dean Leary that used to be the dean at Campbell University?
If you like that guy, then yes.
He was a wonderful, wonderful dean, and that's unusual name.
Then I am totally related.
Good answer.
Absolutely.
And second, congratulations, it is encouraging to see, I think, almost 1,000 books a day being checked out, particularly in a, in a time when the internet dominates our kids and our youth and a lot of adults for their source of reading and getting educated. It's encouraging to see that many books being checked out, I looked at the numbers, almost 1,000 a day, that's impressive.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you saying that, and I would, I'm here to assure you, the death of the book has been predicted for about 40 years, it has not happened yet. As long as people are around, people are going to be reading books, so no worries on that front, I promise you. The tactile experience of holding a book in your hand and reading it is here to stay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all that you do, this is always my favorite time of the year because I always would come up and I'd praise Greg and all the great things that he was doing and how efficient he was running the library, and I can tell that you have hit the ground running, have taken off and are doing an outstanding job over there, and believe me, Rick would tell me otherwise.
Well, thank you so much. Well, again, I appreciate it enormously, and it was an honor to appear before you this evening, thank you.
And the best part about it is the CBB goes first, and then Shepherd Memorial goes next, and then GUC goes, and Tony's always sitting back there going, man, I sure hope they're as nice to me as they are to them.
I hope so too, because you've been very good to me this evening, and I appreciate it a lot. I won't lie, I was nervous to come before you this evening.
You did an outstanding job, so thank you.
All right, much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our last budget presentation is Greenville Utilities Commission. I'll ask our general manager, Tony Cannon, to come forward for the presentation.
Thank you, Larry.
Hey, did you get that drink through the security?
Well, so I've got a really bad cough, and I don't want to be up here coughing into the microphone.
That's what you've been saying for a while.
Maybe that too. I really appreciate it, I thought things would get easier after Greg retired, and clearly[1757.97] I really appreciate it. I thought things would get easier after Greg retired, and clearly, they're not going to be easier on the budget presentation with him gone because the guy did a great job. It looks like he's going to do a really good job for the library.
Yep.
I had no idea that they checked out that many books a day. That's amazing. A little bit about, we just went to New York to visit with the rating agencies for this bond sale that you had approved and our board had approved. And we had some slides there that I thought may be of interest to you. Maybe they're not. I'm going to go through them rather quickly so we don't have to spend a lot of time on them. But, you know, we've been around for a hundred and twenty years as of this spring. The citizens of Greenville sold sixty-five thousand dollars in bonds to start the Light and Water Commission in nineteen oh five. The state of North Carolina stepped in and issued a charter under the general statutes of the state of North Carolina, which established the agency to run the utilities for the city of Greenville and areas outside the city. Today, we provide electric, gas, water, and wastewater services to a hundred and seventy-three thousand customer connections. That's a lot. When you look at all the public power communities in the country, there's a little over two thousand of them, and based on number of customers, we're the forty-fifth largest in the country. Have five hundred and seventeen employees. As I mentioned, we were established under our current charter. So, we had our original charter in nineteen oh five. The charter has been amended several times. We added service, we added natural gas, we added wastewater service at some point, and just several other changes to make sure we stayed current with how we need to be governed. So, our most recent charter was nineteen ninety-two. We're governed by an eight-member board, who, most of them are here, and I would like to thank them for coming this evening. City Manager also serves along board, and Councilman Robinson serves as our liaison. According to the charter, and certainly is true with the board that we have right now, the charter says that our board members should have utility experience and that that experience can include and should include financial, engineering, environmental, technical, and development backgrounds. That's the stuff that we deal with, and people with those backgrounds tend to make really good board members and provide good governance. The board is responsible for the entire supervision and control of the management, operation, and maintenance, improvements and extension of the public utilities of the city, and responsible for setting rates and approving those rates. And the other thing that they have to do is hire a general manager, and my duties that I'm to perform are outlined in the charter as well. Let me just show this because I thought this was interesting. This is our service area. So, the green area in the middle, and I don't know how to make this one point, let's see if I can figure it out, right in here. So, this is the city. That's our sewer area, sewer service area, and you can see that's one of the smallest footprints that we have. The blue footprint there is our water service area. The yellow that you see here, that I'm pointing at now, is our natural gas service area, and then the red is our electric service area. Now, we also, in addition to retail services, we provide wholesale services, wholesale water sales to Stoke Regional Water Corporation, Farmville, and the water systems in Greenville County. We also provide electric wholesale transmission services for the town of Winterville, and we also provide them wholesale firm water as well.
What kind of water?
I'm sorry?
What kind of water?
Wholesale firm, firm wholesale water. So, they buy their water from us and resell it. They started out as an interruptible customer and had some issues with some of their wells, so we moved them over to a firm rate. One of the things that we're proud of, and this is the return on that original sixty-five thousand dollar investment, and that is our transfer to the city's general fund. And over the last ten years, this is also in the charter, so it spells out in the charter how we calculate the turnover to the city. And what it is, it's six percent of the net fixed assets of our electric and gas funds, less the bonded indebtedness, and then we also reimburse fifty percent of the cost of public lighting back to the city. So, you can see over the last ten years, we've transferred seventy-one point three million dollars to the city. The upcoming budget is the largest transfer we've ever made, and it will be around nine point one million dollars. And the transfer over this time period is accounted on average for about seven point eight percent of the city's general fund revenues. It's not insubstantial. To help control costs, we own eleven peak shaving generators at industrial and large commercial sites throughout the system, and last year, we avoided five point one million in demand cost. We share that with the industries that allow us to do that at their sites, and last year, we shared back with them one point four million dollars in savings. We did have a settlement with Duke over a dispute that we had in the contract, and that settlement allowed us to add another twenty megawatts of generation onto the system. We have a project right now, it's under construction, where we're adding ten megawatts of new peak shaving generation at the McGregor Down substation. When that's complete, and we anticipate a payback on that of about three and a half years, we'll proceed with phase two. That's one of the best ways that we can control cost for the citizens to operate that peak shaving generation. Our power comes in two components. One is the cost of energy, and for all but one hour out of the month, a kilowatt hour costs us about two and a half cents. For the one hour that Duke's system is peaking, whatever we take during that period, we're paying about twenty-three dollars a kilowatt hour for that. So, every kilowatt hour that we can reduce saves a ton of money. So, we work really hard to get all the generation we can. This will be a great tool in our toolbox. We also own a battery storage system. It is a one megawatt, two megawatt hour. That means that you can take one megawatt out of the battery, put it on the system. You can do that for two hours. It's our Evan Street substation, and last year, that battery dispatch helped us save about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in demand cost. Since I've been here, a couple of things, three things really, have been consistent throughout our mission: reliability, affordability, and customer service. So, I wanted to touch on a couple of those for you. So, this chart right here is the duration index. So, the duration that a customer could be out. So, if you'll look, we're right at eighty minutes. That's about how long it takes us on average to respond to outages. Some take a little longer, some take a little less, but on average, it's eighty minutes to respond. And you can see, that's well below Duke Energy Progress, Duke Energy Carolinas, and Dominion Power. The other is how many times a year will they be interrupted? This is incredible. So, it lasts about less than half a day, or less than one half of the time per year. So, every other year, you might experience an outage. I do have customers tell me they've not experienced outages in years. But if you'll look over at Duke Energy Progress, Duke Energy Carolinas, and Dominion, that's a pretty good performance record right there, and that speaks volumes to our board's ability and willingness to reinvest into the system, to make it stronger, to make sure that we have the tools, the people, and the equipment that we need to restore power when it does go out, and it will go out. It's a mechanical system, and it's going to fail. We're in an area prone to hurricanes, prone to storms, and it's going to go out, and it's our job to get it back on. So, we need to make sure we have the resources to do that, and we take that into consideration every year when we do the budget.
Tony, what were the red and yellow lines in the middle? Are those median?
So, we measure these as key performance indicators. If we were to approach that yellow line, that's a warning. So, we would have to go back at that point and start reengineering how we're doing things. The red line is where we absolutely don't want to be, which is still below the investor-owned utilities, but we do not want to be there. So, we watch that very closely. And we report that to the board on a monthly basis. The other one, affordability. I'm proud to show these charts. This is the fifteen largest cities in the state of North Carolina. You can see right there, we're highlighted in yellow. That is where we are currently with our rates. This is water, sewer, electric, and gas, which we went and compared that to the water, sewer, electric, and gas in all of these fifteen communities. Very favorable. I can tell you that when I came here and all the way up to two thousand and fourteen, we were not as favorable. We were struggling some with our wholesale power cost, and we had a remedy to that, and we'll share that with you in just a few minutes. But we're now very competitive. And if you're going down and you look at the big box grocery, big box stores like a Walmart or a grocery store like Food Line, you can see that we are, we are the most cost-competitive out of the fifteen largest cities in the state. Same with pharmaceutical manufacturing, manufacturing in general, and a lot of that has to do with the way that our contract is written. Us, we and Fayetteville have very similar contracts, so you'll see us at the bottom of these charts when it comes to industrial and also commercial. This is what I was talking about. So, we sold some of our generating assets that we own jointly through the North Carolina Eastern Municipal Power Agency back in two thousand and fifteen. You can see there are costs declining from two thousand and eleven all the way up through two thousand and fourteen. We sold the assets July first of two thousand and fifteen and lowered rates about seven percent, and over the next two years, we lowered rates for a total of fourteen and a half percent. The mayor will remember, I think maybe he and Michael were the only two here at the time, we had to talk about the rate stabilization fund. And we knew that we were going to have challenges throughout this period, and we have used the rate stabilization fund. We've used it to keep rates stable, to keep rates competitive, and it has worked the way that we intended for it to work. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we are to the point now where there's a lot of pressure on the system, and we're going to see rates continue to rise. So, these first two lines here, that we had a rate increase July one of last year, a small rate increase, almost like two and a half, three percent. But we had two true-ups from Duke Energy, and that is, they give us a projected cost of power every year in December. So, that's how we bill. They say your energy's going to cost this, your demand's going to cost this. We build that into our model, and then that's how we bill the customers. Then it's trued up every July of the following year, so you get January through December, you get the actual cost, and then the next July, they will send us a true-up. Since the inception of this contract until two thousand and twenty-three, it was very close. So, it was a few thousand dollars either side of that. It was very close. But then, I want to know if you guys remember the rolling brown ads we had that Christmas? That created a lot of problems and created a large true-up. So, when we discussed this with the board, we thought the best way to handle that is the same way we're getting charged, and that is, we pay that over a certain number of months. We know exactly what that is because it's based on actual billing per rate class for that period. So, we're able to charge that to that rate class. It rolls on when ours rolls on, and it rolls off when ours rolls off. We make no profit on that whatsoever. It's a pure cost recovery on that rider. So, you see those in there? Those are not actual base rate increases. Those are riders that you see there. There is a proposed rate increase for this year, and I'll cover that in just a minute. So, that's, you see electric here. I thought it would be important, though, for us to show you that the way we show you everything else, and that's in the context of all four utilities. So, you can see here, our rates have been very stable throughout this entire fifteen-year period. I doubt there's anything that you could go buy, be it eggs, or a house, or rent, or a car, or anything else that has the stability that our rates have had over this entire period. I had to superimpose on here what would have happened to our rates if we'd just increased only by the cost of inflation, and that's what that line is at the top. So, you can see there's a pretty good gap starting back in two thousand and fifteen. There's a good gap there between what inflation would have done to us versus what we were able to do from managing expenses and selling the assets, and our team has done a really good job with that. And then the other thing is exceptional customer service. So, every other year, we do a customer satisfaction survey. As you can see here, our overall satisfaction is at eighty-four percent. We do have a goal of eighty percent that we want to maintain there. So, eighty-four percent's really strong in our industry. You hardly ever see that in the utility. But the other is what about the value? And our customers tell you, will tell you that they want to value their services they get from us. We had eighty-five percent on that, so they say we're either good, very good, or excellent as far as the value they get from the utility. Very proud of that. And that, the survey also, just to point this out, this very survey, we'd surveyed the customer, we said, "Would you be willing to pay more for renewable energy?" And most of the customers said they would be willing to pay up to five dollars a month. So, that is what inspired us to do the community solar project that is under construction right now out of Bradford Creek. You should be able to see that going in, in the next couple of months. Contractors got on site working. Peter Franzia and his team at East Carolina conducted the survey for us this year, and he's, I'm going to just read you what he said. He said, "The overall findings from the survey paint a very positive picture of customer satisfaction with Greenville Utilities Commission. In general, customers in the survey gave very favorable ratings in the areas of value, customer service, and reliability of services for gas, water, and electric. This is all the more impressive given the inflationary pressures on the economy over the past few years." And I would tend to agree with him. Those are pretty good numbers to get. So, all that factors into how we budget, right? So, it all comes, at the end of the day, we have to pay for all this. We have to find a way to keep costs under control for our customers. So, this year, this current year, we're projecting to end of the year with about a million dollars fund equity. We are using six million dollars of electric rate stabilization funds this year. That will draw that fund down to where we wanted it to be at the end of this period. We do have some debt rolling off in July. That's why a smaller increase than what would normally be necessary, we can offset that with this rate stabilization fund. We did transfer out money to the gas rate stabilization fund and to capital projects funds this year also. Three hundred and nine million dollar budget. You can see the drivers here. We do have ninety-three, ninety-four million dollars in operations. Like I said, five hundred and seventeen employees and a lot of locations to maintain. But purchase power and gas has always been and will always be the main basic driver for Greenville Utilities. We do have seventeen million dollars in capital outlay and seventeen point six million dollars in debt service currently in this fiscal year. The city turnover this year is going to be eight point seven million dollars. We'll transfer five hundred thousand to the OPEB Trust Fund, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the gas rate stabilization fund, and two point three five million dollars to capital projects. That all said, we really want to know what that makes us look like with our key performance indicators. So, our debt service coverage remains strong. At two point three eight times, our fund balance remains at sixteen point two percent, and days cash on hand is a hundred and thirteen days. You can see that that has decreased. That was by design. We shared that with our financial advisors, with our board, with the rating agencies. This was planned for this to happen, because if not, then we have to touch rates a lot sooner than what we've had to touch it. So, moving on to our proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, there are a lot of cost drivers that we've been dealing with and we continue to deal with. So, low growth, low growth is a big one, not just on our system, and we are experiencing some low growth on our system. The new Boviet manufacturing facility is going to be a very large customer, and grateful to have them. But we're facing some wholesale power cost increases. Duke is changing their energy portfolio mix, and I'm going to show you that slide here in just a few minutes. The cost of infrastructural renewal and replacement has really gone up. Power transformers cost about three times what they had cost previously. Wire costs, pole costs, pipe costs, you name it, trucks, equipment, all those costs continue to rise and rose really high for a few years there, and we were able to manage that. But those are, continue to be drivers as we move forward. Decarbonization. You've heard me talk about House Bill nine fifty-one, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. But there's a cost associated with that, and I think people realize that, but I want to make sure that you're aware of it and that our customers are aware that that is, that is part of a driver in the generation plan that Duke submitted. We're still facing some supply chain issues. I know that all people are facing that, and we're no exception. We still have some supply chain issues. Inflation continues to be a bit of an issue, and then we have regulatory pressures, and I put down here for an example, TFOs. I've talked with you about TFOs before. It's a very serious issue that has to be addressed. I'm not sure we're addressing it in the right way, but we have a plan where we can meet the limits, and that's the plan that we're going to execute. So, I'll share that with you also here in just a few minutes. I mentioned the generation plan that Duke gave to the North Carolina Utilities Commission. That was done, I want to say, the end of twenty-three. They submitted that plan. The Utility Commission gave their order on November first. The directive was to move to a more diverse generation portfolio, and you'll see that they are absolutely doing that. The caveat there is that any generation additions and the associated cost of that would have to be approved independently by the Utilities Commission. I think that's smart, particularly when you're basing a load forecast. You want to make sure that load's actually materializing. Otherwise, you're building generations that's not going to be meeting the demand. Planning reserve margin. So, anything above fifty percent of your generation, you have to have a planning reserve margin. Right now, Duke's planning reserve margin is at seventeen percent, which has been adequate. But when you start adding some more intermittent sources of power such as solar or wind, that creates a need to increase that. So, it's going from seventeen percent to twenty-two percent over, over until twenty thirty-eight. It did delay meeting the interim carbon goals, so you may recall, last year, I talked with you about House Bill nine fifty-one, and that had an interim goal, a seventy percent reduction from the two thousand and five emission levels by twenty thirty. When Duke presented the plan, the Utility Commission said, "Okay, we're going to let you extend this to twenty thirty-five because there's no way you're going to get this stuff built by twenty thirty." It is a big cost driver to compress that into such a short period of time. So, we think that the General Assembly is going to be taking a look at this. We've been talking to them about it. If they were to remove just the interim goal and leave the final goal, it would certainly relieve a lot of cost pressures, and it would allow them to spread some of these investments out over a longer period of time without any damage. Duke is now to report and monitor any large load additions to the Utility Commission, and they were authorized to move forward with what they're calling one utility. So, in North Carolina right now, you've got Duke Energy Progress and Duke Energy Carolinas. They operate as two independent utilities. The Utility Commission has said you can put those utilities together so that they can dispatch a generation over the entire portfolio, over the entire generation portfolio. So, that, we do think that we will. So that, we do think that we will exact, be able to get some benefit from that. We don't know what that benefit is yet. We haven't started those negotiations, but they want the power agency and the members of the power agencies to support One Carolina because there's a lot of benefit that could come to their customers and our customers from that. This is not cheap. So just to remind you, this is their generation plan. This does not include transmission and distribution improvements for the, for the additional load. This is just generation. And the generation plan is $78 billion through 2038. Duke has estimated that their retail, their residential customer bill impact would increase by $80 a month over that same time period. When we ran the numbers for us, it's very similar to that and that is substantial. Compounded rate of about 3.6% per year throughout the period. I'll make sure y'all understood that. That's compounded rate. So every year we're looking at a 3.6% increase in our wholesale cost of power. And this is what they're doing. So this is the capacity resource mix of the combined systems. You can see that the coal, which is, this is coal right here in 2025, that's being reduced to this. That is quite a reduction over that time period. You see a lot more combined cycle and combustion turbines there. Those are natural gas plants that they're building. You see increase in nuclear, a big increase in solar, a modest increase in hydro. They're adding wind, both onshore and offshore wind in this plan. And overall, they're adding almost 14,000 megawatts of capacity to their system. That's substantial. Like I said, power agency ran that, what is gonna be the impact of this on our wholesale power costs? It's about 3.5 to 4.5% for gear. And we anticipate that we will get some benefit from One Utility. We have no idea what that is, so we're not building that into our rate plan yet because it's just too early to know what that is. This is fluid. It's something that we'll be looking at every single year. I mentioned PFOS. We've been monitoring PFOS since 2018 and we have detected PPOA and PCOS in our system at four parts per trillion. When we started monitoring in 2018, we were told that that limit was gonna be set somewhere between 75 and 100 parts per trillion. The EPA, two years ago, came out and they said they were setting it at the detection limit of four parts per trillion. Put that in perspective, take two Olympic-sized pools and a water dropper, a drop of water or one drop and two Olympic-sized pools, that's about four parts per trillion. We don't think that's based in real good science. We do think this is something that has to be addressed, but they really didn't call and ask our opinion if we thought it was good science or not. I know there's several lawsuits going on over this. There's always been, there's already been some settlements from DuPont and 3M and others that contributed to the PFOS. We've been a party to those settlements. I'm gonna address that here in just a few minutes. But we have been, we have been working to find out a way for us to address this and we have found that granulator, granular activated carbon, GAC, is best to remove. So we have tested this and it completely removed it. We were able to get below the detection limits. You'll recall that last year we completed an expansion at our water treatment plant. We went from 22.5 MGD to 30, 32 MGD. The new side of the plant is a technology called a superpulsator. Superpulsator settles differently than traditional carbon beds. And the superpulsator, we have not been able to detect any PFOS on that side of the plant since we can't afford to spend another $60 million on a, to replace what we have, probably today, $150 million. We found that granulated active, activated carbon is the best to do. We did one of those in '23, it worked great. So we have 10 filters to do at a cost of $250, $250,000 per filter, so you're looking at $2.5 million to do that. There will be an ongoing maintenance cost associated with that. We anticipate that to be a million to $2 million a year to the water fund. So our recommended actions to deal with all of this stuff is 3.7% rate increase in electric. That is driven almost entirely by wholesale power costs. There is some cost in there associated with some inflation that we've seen and some projects that we, that we're having to build next year. Water, last year we're projecting a 2.2% increase. This year it's zero. We were able to not do that. There is an increase. Our formulaic wholesale water rate is adjusted annually, so this year it's going from 259 to 278 per gallon. Sewer, 6.5% rate increase, which is exactly what we forecast last year. Bethel's monthly sewer surcharge is increasing from 1383 to 1633 and that's based on the cost of replacing the sewer system up there pretty much. Replacing all the pump stations, we've done a lot of point of service repairs. We replaced some of the lines. In our agreement with Bethel, it was that whatever those costs ended up being, that we weren't able to cover in grants, we would recover through this surcharge. To note, their water and sewer rates are still about 23% cheaper than they were when we took the system over. Not too bad. 4.9% rate increase in gas, you know that we've, we brought some capital projects to you that you've approved and they were in the debt that we issued. So really, when you look at sewer and you look at gas, a lot of that is to cover the increase in debt service that we're gonna be having for the capital that we're building. The board did instruct us a couple of years ago, we were having some fluctuations in our fees, particularly as it related to development and other miscellaneous fees and the board asked us to adjust those annually at the CPI. So last year CPI was right around 2.9% for our area, so we're gonna adjust those fees by 2.9%. Some exceptions to that are exact calculations based on the cost of materials that we need to serve. You'll see here that some of those are reduced, some of them are increased and I just want you to know that's based on a calculation that we do on the actual cost of service and cost of materials. This is year two, phasing in our calculated system development fees on sewer. Last year we went to 75% of the calculated rate. This year, we're proposing to go to 85% of the calculated rate and then 95% of calculated rate in '27. And these are, these are development fees. A couple of new riders that we're putting in, well, this is a revision to a rider. It is qualified customer resource policy. This is really to make sure that this rider matches the rider that we have on our power supply contract. So used to say qualified generation, now it's qualified resource, but it also gives some credits back, similar to what we get, a CP credit for any energy that's exported back onto the system. A new electric rate rider is a commercial renewable excess energy buyback credit rider. So if you are a commercial customer and you install commercial solar on your facility, if you generate more than what you use on a given day, then we will buy that back at our avoided cost of power. This year it's 5.833 cents. It'll, that, that will change every year based on our cost from the power agency. This is not something we had before. I think this will be well received and it cannot exceed, the credit cannot exceed the amount of energy purchased for the same period. So whatever you export during May can't exceed what you purchased from us during May. All total, the budget's increasing to $314,000 with $98,000, that being operations, 161 purchased power and gas. We've got almost $20 million in this budget for capital outlay and capital outlay is what we would spend in a 12-month period and pay cash for it. You see that the debt service has increased and that's based on the projects that we have brought to you before and that our board has approved before and also the bond issuance that we just did. The city turnover is going to about $9.1 million, transferred to OPEB trust at 500,000 and then transferring out about $2.5 million to capital projects. Our key performance indicators remain stable, 2.2, 2.42 times debt service coverage, 15.6% fund balance and 113 days cash on hand. Some key provisions in the budget were continued. This is year five of five of the electric rate implementation. They recall that we haven't been having increases there. What we've been doing is trying to quit interclass subsidies. We had some. They became more prominent when we went to the new power supply contract. We had a rate design done five years ago, a rate study done, a cost of service study done and it showed us that. Rather than making wholesale changes in year one, which could have increased costs for some customer classes, the board chose to adopt a five-year phase-in plan, so this is year five of that plan. As I mentioned, $9.1 million turnover to the city of Greenville, $650,000 for, to continue as your partner with the Greenville-ENC Alliance, $150,000 to continue as your partner with the city's energy efficiency partnership, $19.8 million in capital outlay, $2.5 million to transfer to the capital fund and $21.7 million in debt service. We've covered this before because in the meeting a few weeks ago you approved this, but 4% employee market merit adjustment, increase from 3% to 4% to 401K, continuing our health and dental plans. And then one thing that we, we have really been focusing on in the last two years is developing a succession management strategy. We've got a lot of folks who are retiring and can retire, a lot more who can retire in the next five years. Our HR group has been working extensively with the departments, each department, to identify who's eligible to retire, who will likely retire. Do we have any likely people to come behind? You're always better if you can promote within, I believe. And we've developed some of that. We've developed what skills gaps are there. So some people, we do not have a known successor that we've been able to identify at this time. So what we include in the budget every year are some funds to bring replacements on ahead of time so we can have business continuity and we can have an opportunity for knowledge So with our proposed rates, we are still extremely competitive. I do wanna point out on these rates, particularly in these communities that have water and sewer, we expect this to change. We, we expect to be in a good or maybe even a better position than what we were before, but we wanted to show you where our current rates are, what our proposed rates are, where we stack up. Still the lowest on the big box grocery stores and just above Fayetteville on pharmaceutical and manufacturing. I would imagine that Fayetteville's gonna have to make some of the rate adjustments that we make because we have identical power supply contracts and we don't know what they're doing as far as their rate adjustments yet. Never wanted to do this in just a one-year look, so you know, it took, it took us 15 years to expand the water plant last time. It takes 10 years to build generation. This is not a quick moving business. There's a lot of moving parts that you have to look at and evaluate. So we wanna look at it in terms of long-term financial forecasts. We don't wanna overburden our current customers and we don't wanna overburden our future customers, so we want to try to balance that out as best we can. I mentioned that we went to the credit rating agencies. We have received Fitch's rating. They have affirmed our AA+ rating with a stable outlook. Had a very good meeting with them. And then Moody's has not issued the rating yet, but they have told us that they are affirming our AA1, which is the highest AA rating that they have with a stable outlook. Looking at our key performance indicators, mainly what I want you to look at here is what is highlighted in green because that's really what we have to keep an eye on because that's, that keeps us in line. You can see that throughout the period, these key performance indicators remain very stable. So start out the five-year period at 2.42 times debt service coverage and then at 2.38. In that debt, in that five-year period, we would do another debt issue. Fund balance remains very stable, 15.6% down to 15.3. Projected days cash on hand grows by one day. It goes up and then it comes down, but 113 days to 114 days. And then you always wanna look at the equity ratio. We don't ever wanna be below 60% more than one or two years if we have to. So it's, it's staying at or above 60% throughout the period and that is your equity in your system compared to your debt. Typical bill does continue to grow throughout the period, but I think that it's a manageable rate. We wanted to look and make sure that that was the case so that one year we don't have rate shock. That's not to say that something could happen that would cause costs to go through the roof. We've seen that happen in recent years. There's nothing to tell me that it won't happen at some point in the future. We just don't know when. So we have to, when we build our budgets, we do a couple of things. We weather normalize and we make some assumptions. So our assumption's here that we're gonna have about 2.5% inflation over the period and I think that's probably reasonable. It may fluctuate some over time. The one thing that I can tell you, once we get past the next budget year, these numbers will change. They change every year and there's no way they're not gonna change. They change for the city, they change for us, they change for everybody. Capital improvement funding plan, we've got about $300 million worth of capital that we need to do over the next five years and it's about funded half with cash, half with debt to help us maintain the ratios that I mentioned earlier. We do have some projects to be adopted with the budget. One is the operation center renovation. Y'all may recall, some of you who were here at the time, when we built our new operation center, we had a big building out on the front facing 43. We were gonna have HR and IT, we were gonna have a big training facility there. The cost of that building at that time was about $8 million and we said, you know, we can wait on that. We've got facilities that we can use. We went back out and took a look at that about two years ago and that cost to go to $16 million. Today it's probably 20. So I said, "All right, guys, scratch your head and come up with a way to fix this." And what they did is they did a project utilization, space utilization study at the operation center and they came back and they said, "We can shift some things around, move some walls, move some people and we can do that for $2 million, get what we needed and not have to build that $20 million building probably for another four or five years." So that's in here, the big one, advanced metering infrastructure. Our metering infrastructure right now is automated metering. Advanced metering infrastructure is the next generation. Ours is at the end of the useful life. We installed that in 2008. It is starting to be hard for us to find all the parts and meters that we need to continue with that system, so we need to transfer to this. It looks like a big number and it is a huge number at $49 million, but this is an eight-year project. We added it to 10-year project. The board at our planning session said, "Let, let's see what that would look like if we took it to an eight-year project." And really it was a negligible, negligible impact on rates. So now you're looking at an eight-year project there. Some of our distribution substation transformers are nearing the end of their useful life. We're gonna have to replace those that have costed about $6 million next year. Some DOT projects in water, the Evans Street project and the Dickinson Avenue water projects, those numbers will change. We'll be coming back to you with budget amendments as we get actual cost on those projects. The water filter improvements, the changing to the GAC media is, the budget is 5.5 million. So I told you the cost just to replace the media was $2.5 million. We're gonna get $5.5 million from the settlement with DuPont and 3M is what we think we're gonna get from that. And there are other things that we can do that would prolong the life of those filters and maybe help us reduce some of the operating costs in that year, such as covering the filters, is one thing that we can do. And there's a number of other things that we can do. So this is, this is the project budget. It is subject to change and I would say it's subject to change on the downside, not the upside, but to be on the safe side, $5.5 million there. Sewer, the Evans Street project, it's sewer. And then gas, we did receive a grant for an integrity management project of $700,000. So in summary, we're continuing what we've been doing. The funds are balanced. We did have to do some prioritizing, moving around the capital projects and expenditures, but we feel that we can continue to maintain competitive rates, reliability and exceptional customer service. And with the proposed rate adjustments, all funds are balanced and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions? Seen that? Oh, no questions? Counselor Blackburn?
I have just some quick questions. They are both the macro 30,000 foot as well as the micro. What, what are all the rate increases for electric, water, sewer?
Sorry, let me go back to that slide.
I think, I remember 3.7 for electric, was that right?
3.7 electric, 6.5 sewer, 4.9 gas.
Okay, so want to, another small scale question. The, the fee, I saw a point about increasing fees and one of those was to restore accounts. I'm presuming this means you get your power cut off because you didn't pay your bill. How, how much is that going to increase to?
2.9%. So I think that cost right now is $45. So that would increase by 2.9%.
So that's would be... What's the total then? If it increases by 2.9%, I don't have a calculator on me right now.
I don't have that in the top of my head and I don't have a calculator.
So from 45 to about $46?
Yeah.
To get your power turned back on? Okay, great. Now the 30,000 foot, let's stump the bartender question. Not gonna surprise you, Tony. How are we doing with getting away from natural gas, both as a heating source as well as part of our power mix?
We're not, we're not gonna see what happens.
Natural gas was once conceived, once seen as a cleaner, it certainly was cleaner than coal, but we now know that natural gas is a fossil fuel and is still not where we need to be. So that's what I'm asking.
So we have 25,000 gas customers, you're one.
I am.
And it is a much cleaner source of fuel. We've got, you know, if you, if you look at the depreciated value of that gas system is a little over $100 million. The replacement cost of that gas system is probably 250 million. The replacement cost of that gas system is probably two hundred and fifty million dollars. And with that type of investment of public money, we can't just walk away from it. We have to manage that, we have to make it as safe and efficient as we can possibly make it. But, it won't happen in my lifetime, maybe in some future lifetime when some more technology develops that is as reliable and dependable as natural gas, perhaps, but I just, I don't see it on the horizon that that's going to go away.
That's fair. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Any other questions? Councilmember Willis?
For the customer service, the customer survey that you mentioned earlier, can you give figures on how many were actually surveyed?
We can. So, when we do this, we ask the survey, in this case ECU, Dr. Franz and his group to do a statistically valid sample. And we wanted to do it for customers who have all four utilities, customers who may have two, customers who may have one. So, they do a random search. This year we surveyed, we had survey responses from six hundred and ninety-four customers, which is considered more than statistically valid. It's the highest number of responses we've had, so I feel really good about those numbers.
So, you said about six hundred and ninety-one?
Six hundred and ninety-four, I think was the number. Help me find it. I think, I think it was six hundred, it was six hundred and ninety-something. Could be one or four, but it's six hundred and ninety-something.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I was curious, you talked about increasing the local generation for peak hours. How do we generate that power?
Natural gas.
Natural gas?
Yeah, so we switched from diesel to natural gas probably ten years ago. And whenever the generators are ending their useful life, end of their useful life, we're replacing those with a natural gas generator.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Do I understand, you mentioned where we are in the country, I think, which my calculation is about the top two percent, but we're the second largest utility provider in the state, aren't we?
We are. So, Fayetteville Public Works is the largest municipally-owned system in the state. They have, they have a lot bigger water system than we do. Our electric system, they've got about ten thousand more electric customers. And it's interesting, the two state chartered utilities in North Carolina are Greenville and Fayetteville. So, we have been able to operate a little bit more as a regional utility. You saw the footprints of our four different service areas. And the state sees us that way. So, the state is really focusing on regionalism. I did meet with the new treasurer, I guess, two weeks ago now, and he wanted to talk about our project that we did in Bethel. I shared this with Mr. Blunt. That is like the shining star of the projects that they've had. So he, he wants us at the table when they start talking about, how do we do more efficient, cost-effective regional development? And it's going to take, that's not something they're going to be able to get done this year, but I think we're in a good position to be part of that solution.
I think it's just, your presentation supports, I looked at this and it looks like nineteen years in a row we've gotten the award for excellence for utility provider in the state of North Carolina. Is that likewise correct?
That is correct.
And recently, I remember, because I'm always looking at the awards, we got awards for water quality. And I know you educated me about that filtration system that you talked about and the fact that that new system that we spent all that money on basically eliminates all those, what do you call those?
PFAS.
C-FAS, P-FAS.
PFAS, it does.
Essentially eliminated all of the carbon filtration system we had.
It is a very effective system that we have up there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Those are my comments, any questions?
Thank you.
With the, with the mention of PFAS, what was the percentage of that again? Can you remind me?
So we have detected on different occasions, four parts per trillion, which is the detection limit, which they have now set as the limit. So that's why we're going to need to replace that filter media that we have in the old apartment system.
Okay. But the super pulsator, I think that's what Les was referring to.
That's the new, that's the new side of the plant, it's ten million gallons a day, and it is effectively removing the PFAS without any, any additions to that side.
What percentage of the services is impacted by that super pulsator?
All, everybody that has water. So, so the water, the water's combined before it leaves the plant. So, customers don't know if it comes from the new side or the old side of the plant. We store it in three million gallon tanks.
So it assists in reducing the whole?
It would, yeah. But, but we still have to measure it in the plant.
Why?
And when we measure it in the plant, we know that the old side's not as effective as the new side in removing. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say too, thank you for all that you've done. This is, I'm sitting here counting, this is my tenth budget presentation by GUC and I will say that, early on, I was, I like to challenge you a little bit. And I was a very big questioner of the rate stabilization fund, but I think the fruits of, of that fund have started to come out and, you know, I had several other local elected officials, I won't name any names, that were touting about how their rates were so much, so much better than GUC's rates. Well, they're singing a different tune now. And I appreciate all that you've done to be able to stabilize those, those rates in each of the, each of the funds that you handle. And I think the citizens of Greenville have greatly benefited from your leadership and everything that the board has done over the years to maintain those low rates.
We have had, we have had great board members, you know, we have, for those of you who have not seen it, we have plaques in our boardroom that go all the way back to the very first board meeting, who has been a commissioner and who have been the board chair. And when you go back and you start reading it, and you read the history of Greenville, it's those guys. And we have been, we have really benefited as a utility from having that stable, strong leadership. And you guys have appointed some really good board members. I'm very proud of our board and what they do. And even the city manager is okay.
He's okay.
Even the city manager.
I have really enjoyed working with Michael and I think we've got a lot of good stuff done.
Yeah.
But thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
I know I'm really just doing it for those maybe watching, when we had the true-up, that's the real cost of the power that we receive, you dispersed it out over how many months?
Twenty-four months.
So that way it wouldn't hit our customers as big at one time?
Correct.
And so, at the end of that period, the customer will see a reduction in their rates.
That's right. So, so right now, that first true-up is scheduled to roll off April one of twenty-six.
Good. That's, that's why I want to know, so you're trying to help our customers even more so they don't get hit all at one time and it'll come down once the true-up's been paid out.
And you may have recognized that, you know, we typically don't take a rate study and just implement those rates hard stop. That, I don't think that would be affordable to our customer. So the board has adopted the policy to adopt a rate plan over multiple years so that we can better, better manage that for the customer.
Tony, thank you. It's a pleasure working with you and the board members and you've got an excellent staff that works with you and your management team and your employees. And it's demonstrated because every time I go to that meeting, we're recognizing awards that we've gotten, recognized for our employees and our staff members and the innovation that the utilities has, and that's, that's a credit to you and the board that manages you. So, thank you to all of y'all for coming in today and doing such a good job on this presentation and running our utilities for our city and our county.
Thank you. I had somebody tell me a long time ago, surround yourself with the best and brightest people and you won't have to work as hard. So that's what I try to do.
I have something really quick, Tony.
The horse run, the race has to run hard too now, just remember that.
Wait one second.
I have a question, Tony.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You know, the presentation talks a lot about what it takes to run GUC and things like that. Tell us a little bit about what you all give to the community.
So we do give back a lot to the community. I don't, I should have thought to bring that, it is actually on our website.
Okay.
We put that out on the website, it's under in the community. We have folks out in the community every year. Every week, we have somebody out in the community. We have people who actually volunteer their time to go out on weekends, to go out in the evenings to events. And I think that, I think it would be a disservice to the community if we didn't support this community. If Duke was here, they would be supporting the community. This community should not be penalized because Greenville Utilities is here and not Duke. So, that has been our philosophy for a number of years and I hope that we're able to continue that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's on your website, our donations and assistance that details everything you do. So the public wants to see that, they can go to the website and send it. And there's a lot, a lot of what the utilities does for the community gives back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have one more question.
Okay.
For our constituents, there's a lot of talk around the country about the weakening of electrical infrastructure. What are we doing locally to prevent sabotage or anything like that?
That's a great question and when you look at our five-year plan, you know, we've got a lot of transmission improvements out there, we've got a lot of substation transformer replacements. Those are your big components that would be subject to failure after their useful life. We're systematically going through and replacing those. Two of the big power transformers down at the Mumford Road Station are slated to be replaced and those are multimillion dollar transformers, but they're also the heartbeat of the system, so we can't do without that. There is an issue in the United States with the electric grid in some parts. Duke has done a fairly good job of maintaining their generation and maintaining their transmission. So I think we're in a pretty good spot here, but throughout the country, there's a lot of issues. And I will tell you, as we add electrification, and the estimate is that we're going to add a tremendous amount of electrification through artificial intelligence, through data processing, through electric vehicles, it's going to require a lot of additional electric infrastructure that is going to cost hundreds of billions of dollars, if not more, over, over a period of time.
Wow. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank all y'all for showing up too. Appreciate you.
Alright. Move on.
See, the management report. Mayor, I do not have anything except, I'd like to wish my wife a Happy Mother's Day.
You better have.
She, I tell my kids many times that they better thank God that they were born with her as their mother. But she is, I'd just like to wish her a Happy Mother's Day, that's all.
Alright. Tony McGirt, what you got?
I would ditto that. Happy Mother's Day to my lovely wife and thinking about my late mother and my daughter and Happy Mother's Day, Mother's Day to all the mothers and female council members and all the mothers and women in the audience. Had to outdo the committee.
Nice job.
Good choice, good choice. Councilmember Foreman?
Just to let the citizens know that Hype Fest is coming up on the seventeenth of this month and it's their thirtieth anniversary. And want to thank the city for their support of the organization and all they do for the young men in our community.
Alright, thank you very much. Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, thank you. I just want to address some stark realities that we experienced on Monday when we had our City of Greenville budget presentation. We are in imminent threat or at imminent risk of losing funds because of irrational decision-making that's taking place in Washington DC. And on Monday, we saw the way that specifically can affect our community. We are at risk of losing about nine million dollars that we were counting on for an infrastructure improvement and that's just one example. I would like to commend our staff for creating a budget that continues to envision a growing and thriving Greenville in spite of the risks that we're facing, in spite of the potential risks and threats that we're facing. And I would also like to say that it is essential, even critical, for this city council to support them in that work and to support the budget as it was presented. Thank you.
Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to congratulate the police department on their continued Citizens Academy. I think they may have one more class being held on Thursday night, so I think they have one more Thursday night and those participants will be graduating. So another successful Citizens Academy they have. Thank you to Chief Tindall for his leadership and then being willing to sponsor that for our citizens. I also wanted to highlight again the community baby shower being hosted by the Greenville Parks and Recs location at the South Greenville Parks and Recs Center. And they are still open to donations, if anybody is open to donating toward that cause and supporting the moms and babies in our community. And Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and those who have a mothering spirit. And Happy Mother's Day to my mom who happens to be in the audience. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. You got something over there?
You got something?
I don't know about that. I don't know about that. Councilmember Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Mother's Day, everybody. To my wife Erin, it's our first Mother's Day without my mom, so think about our family and the families that have lost mothers or have different kinds of families, don't have a mom, or moms, ladies that are stepping up to the plate to provide mothering to families without moms. There's all kinds of moms in this world and we thank God for each and every one of them. So Happy Mother's Day. And another big happy graduation to all of our Pirates who are going to be walking tomorrow. So congratulations, I'm proud of you for all your hard work, especially our Scully graduates. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. To my beautiful, lovely, gorgeous, intelligent, talented wife, thank you for marrying me. And you are the backbone of our family and you're the wings beneath my wings that help me fly.
Oh, Lord.
Oh, my God.
She really is, because I tell you, I got married late, I found her and I, wow, this is the woman I need to marry, right? Because she's going to put up with me, number one, apparently, but number two, supports me in every endeavor. So Happy Mother's Day to my beautiful wife. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers up here. Ma'am, you've got to be proud of your daughter up here on the council. Happy Mother's Day to you. So all the mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day. You really are the backbone of our families and help all of us do things. And some don't get recognized like they should because they stay home, but I can tell you, my wife stayed home and what a worker bee she has been and has been to take care of that. Congratulations to my youngest daughter. She is now going to become a senior. She just finished up her junior years, getting ready to work with Peter Malar and she's home. I'm so happy for her. And I'd like to say, please keep, Councilmember Monica Daniels, and your prayers and thoughts with her family and her sister especially. We're going through, she's going through a difficult time, so please keep her in your prayers and thoughts. And congratulations to all the ECU grads. If you're thinking about staying in Greenville, please do. We're going to find you jobs and give you amenities and make it a great place to come to. Finally, I just want to remind everybody who's watching us in this council that a large part of our budget that we use to operate the city for our citizens is the taxes we derive from the property taxes and the sales taxes. So, the only way for us to grow is to develop our properties and generate businesses that have sales taxes and that's how we grow our city. And we need to do so in a very deliberate way that serves our citizens best because we only look to the north of us and east of us to see cities that are struggling with that, such as Williamson or Parma Lee or Bethel or Jamesville and Plymouth. Plymouth's getting ready to lose their hospital here shortly and that's very sad. So, I hope this council will join me in my efforts to, to continue to grow Greenville and to bring businesses here and develop it. And as we always, as I always say, Mayor, you know what I'm going to say, let's grow Greenville greater. Thank you.
Let's do it.
Madam Clerk, what you got?
Madam Clerk?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just thank you all again for the recognition for me and my two clerks here in the back. Appreciate that. Also, Happy Mother's Day, of course, to my queen bee, I call her Queen Julie, that's my mom, that's her nickname in our family, all the moms here in this room. But again, I'm going to give it up, especially to these two in the back, they make me tired just listening to all the duties that they juggle along with being a mom. A lot of respect to you ladies. Happy Mother's Day to all. Happy Mother's Day to all.
Very nice. Mayor Protem Daniels?
My turn. It is Nurses Week and I would like to say Happy Nurses Week. Their theme is thank a nurse. My daughter Shanita and her husband Sam are both nurses, so I just want to give a shout out to them. And to the ECU nurses, they allowed me to come and read the proclamation this week. My sister was in the hospital and I was upstairs, so I was like, I'll be right back. I ran downstairs, read the proclamation and then went back up. But the nurses stopped by, they were very nice to us and kind, and so thank you all for that. It is also Teachers Week. So remember to thank the educators for the hard work that they, they put in each and every day with y'all children. No, because mine are grown and gone out of school. But, and Municipal Clerks Week, thank you again for all that you do. And we had City Vision, I'm not sure if this came up last week, but our staff, every single one was so awesome. People from all across North Carolina said they have never seen the hard work, the friendliness, just everything. Staff was, was so wonderful. And then they came back to the office to do some more work after they were serving everyone else. So it was just wonderful, and I thank all of our staff for that. Monday on the consent agenda, there was something about us helping Kinston with code enforcement. And also I've spoken with the council member and I'm not going to say what town, and they were like, they would love to talk to our police department and see how we run so efficiently. And, you know, nobody gets it right all the time, but they do their best and they give it 100%. So to all of our staff, thank you for all that you do. Thank you to all my council members for your thoughts, your prayers.